Watch out finish work.
Oh, okay.
Are you okay? Do you need help? Do you need help getting kids to school?
No, we have the track, so it should be okay. It works from home, so.
Okay.
Luckily.
Well, if you don't need anything, I know.
Appreciate that. Is there a friend of the gentleman's?
Anything else?
No, well, we sent them another.
So we'll call the meeting to order at seven oh seven. And can get a motion without the agenda. I'll make the motion. Okay, Sarah, for your second.
Also, and thanks, Kim.
All right, on favor. And then we've got two minutes to approve July and August, because last month we didn't have a forum. So does anybody have any questions, corrections, comments on either one of those minutes? You know, motion to accept July and August. It's Patty's second. Rebecca, thank you. On your favor. Oh, I should have said, so Scott is going to be a few minutes late, and Noe is not going to be here tonight. And the news is that Noe is going to be stepping down from the board by December. So I'm going to give an exact date, yeah, but he's got two jobs going on. And they're also one of those jobs requires him to be on boards and committees and could seal. And it's just too much to juggle right now. So he did say he would be still continuing to volunteer to help with website and social media as a unit. So that's great. We'll just have him on the board, and of course, now we've got two vacancies to fill. And we saw some roles to fill, if we can call about later. So with that, our planning calendar, which we have the big event coming up this Sunday. Are you? So we were just getting started, and I'll just repeat the news. So Noe is not here tonight, and he has given his notice that he'll be stepping down from the board by December. It's two jobs, and their requirements with their own set of committees and boards, it's just too much to juggle right now. So he will be as a volunteer to help with website and social media, but not, not even so connected to the board right now. Was that an option?
No.
Okay, so we were just moving on to the planning calendar. So this Sunday, obviously, we've got our big anniversary event. We'll talk about that in detail later. September is also the month where we start strategic plan review. So I forget, Kim and Ken, if you guys already met or were meeting.
We were going to meet, and then all of us started throwing up.
Okay. So after you had me, I did start to look at the strategic plan and put together some thoughts. So I looked at some of the other libraries around things and thought what I might have as ideas for some adjustments to make as well. So.
Give it a look next Monday. Do we want to, while we're here, schedule another strategic planning meeting?
Sure. Yep. That sounds like a good idea. Shall we do that during the meeting? We'll also be talking about the summer camp and the commission budget. And I know some better Rebecca and Mr. Sorry, permission on that. And this is the month when Halloween parties is planning. And then October is really the heavy season for planning. So let's do a plan approval, starting the budget sessions, working through that. So we'll be, we'll be, I will also need to start planning the holiday market. So we did an initial outreach, but and just felt like I didn't have bandwidth to really focus on that until after we settled with that. So after that, we'll go ahead and get moving on on that. So you know, the October Halloween party is actually on the twenty ninth, not on the thirty.
Twenty nine, though.
Did we come up with the time?
Yes.
So we've got twenty ninth for Halloween party, and then the holiday market scheduled for the twenty fifth, which is Friday after Thanksgiving. So we've got that and the new trial kind of thing following on. And then December third is the Santa, the picks, storytime, music, holiday event thing. Anyone have anything else I'm considering on planning? Move on to the details. So these are stuff that this is still actually.
So we've got a quick program coming up in the next, you know, couple of weeks or so. So tomorrow night is our team night. We already have eleven kids signed up. And there's usually at least one or two who don't sign up, who actually might show up. So that's great that we have that number. Logan's doing his book signing on Saturday from eleven till probably like twelve thirty or so. The fundraiser is on Saturday, Sunday, book club, Lego club. We're doing Birds of Prey again, so that'll be hopefully a fun thing. We'll do that under the tent at four thirty. I have magic club in here, but we have yet to have anyone actually show up for it. Although last week someone did show up wanting to find out about it, and they were on vacation, are magic people. So I don't know. I have reached out, and I'm not sure what we're, where that's going to go. We're going to give Crosby a try during Lego club. That way, kids can come in and out and go back and forth, and maybe they'll get more traffic for Crosby. So see if that works. Sounds like a great idea. And then we're doing the Caldecop presentation in October, which I'm going to start advertising as well. That's a month for that one. Same thing, storytimes, my dungeon dragons, everything's still plugging along with all those things. They're doing great. I had to cancel storytime this week because Alden was sick, and I didn't want something about to bring him in, a bunch of toddlers. So I think you're at the doctor's. The D and D group kids, they're still meeting and still going extremely strong, so they're doing great. And I know Ma's eyes still get like, you know, four to six people every, every game, so except for on Saturdays. We have it up since the Saturday game, but no one really ever shows up. So it's there if anyone wants to. For October, or excuse me, for August and September programs that we had, obviously, live at the library, we had two, our last two performances. Our numbers just are not good, but I think that we're going to talk about that at some point. But our, we have to reevaluate how we're going to do it next year. It's just definitely not. It's not worth the money that we're putting in and the effort and expense. So I think maybe it was probably just a really good, it worked so well the first year because it was pandemic time, and people were just looking to get out of the house. Yeah, so this year, we'll see where it goes. But our end of summer reading program, we were supposed to have River Jack Zee from the Zucchini Brothers, but I had two kids sign up, so we canceled that because just did not make sense. To pay three hundred and seventy-five dollars, you have to do it with two kids who really weren't even necessarily wanting to do it in the first place.
Did anybody show up on a day off?
Not a person. So we had a good group for the ice cream party. So we had three toddlers, ten kids, twelve teens, and eight adults. So, you know, and they had fun getting their tickets, and they still have some prizes that need to get to go. But yeah, that was. Our last team night, we had six kids, so the team night seems to be going well as well. The blood drive, we had thirty-nine people or thirty-nine units collected, which was great. We did not, Taylor Meyer was going to continue doing a read aloud, but it just, I don't think it ever really worked out. She had to change state, and I had to change state, and it just, so I'm going to touch base with her and see if we can't get back.
That was the diversity one, though?
Yeah, yeah, so we still have to talk about the furniture and all that stuff too soon. The Dungeons and Dragons one shot that Braylon decided to give a try. We had one team come to it, which is really kind of too bad. So she can fortunately get the feeling of what it's like to plan a program, and then have no one show up.
Is that person, though, interested in joining with?
Yes, actually, she's now a part of their regular. Yeah, and she's, she's a good kid, so they were, they were happy to have her there. Lego club, it's still happening. They're still get, we have our regulars coming in, and they're still enjoying it. Our positive aging program with Ellen Cole was fantastic. We had thirteen adults in person and five adults on virtual. So that was great. That was really good. And she is, would love to come back and do other programs. So we're talking about the possibility of doing a program, an informational program that had deals with gender identity and, you know, the things that we're dealing with now with all the kids and everything. So, because that was her specialty, she was a, she dealt with a lot of that during her practice. So I'm not sure yet. We're going to see where it goes, but giving that a try.
We also want to do that focus group with after the.
Yes.
Yes. Supposed to help her find people to participate.
Yes, I haven't heard back from her, like she was supposed to send me some form, but I have not.
I had one person, but one more.
Community room, well, we're building use, I should say. John Wall's still using it. He gives us the fifty bucks a month for it. And Intervisible Seating House is going to use it on Saturday, and they've already given us a hundred dollar donation to put towards the taking the tent down, or, you know, just as a way to use it. It's a cool little group.
And they're just using the outside and no?
No inside use. No, they just said, just as long as we can use the conference, that's fine. So everything else sits up to them. Our circulation just keeps going up and up. We're up two hundred items since last time, so that's pretty cool. Our circulation's going up, our, even things like children's books. Last July, we had three hundred and thirty-four children's books circulated this year. This month, it was five hundred and thirty-seven, things like that. It's just great. And then same thing with total visits in August, which is usually a slower month for us. We had seven hundred and seventy-nine people, which is also, in July, it was six hundred and fifteen. So that's, that's a good job for us. But somehow, we are now down on registered patrons, so. Because their, their cards must have expired. So I'm going to, now that I see that we have that happening, I'll reach out to them and see if we can get them back. We can see our collection, what we put into the system, and what we've taken, withdrawn fifty different materials or a couple of books and things. See, it's on the shelves now. So for the website, I've been working on that. So we have the veterans pages finished. Then they're just going to continue telling me what they want to add to it, but I was able to figure out the formatting. So was able to do that. I was also able to finish the history page for us, which came out much better than it had been. So now that I've got all the formatting things, I think it should be a lot easier to get them going. Of course, though, I was working on it for, I think I was on the computer for like four hours, and then I hit back. And I lost everything. I was so mad. Yeah, it was not, not a good afternoon for that one. So, but luckily, I had made all my mistakes and figured it all out, so I was able to get it back quickly, but still. I still need to get pictures of everybody for the trustee page, and I still need to get pictures from, from the staff for their staff page. So if anyone wants to do that, I'd be happy to get their pictures for it.
Maybe we could get a lot of them at the event.
I was like, I wanted to take them in front of the stained glass, just so they're all. So. We could, but.
If you would make it look like, like it would be fun to be on board.
So one of the big things that I worked on this, this year or this month was trying to start the construction grant process. Obviously, that did not continue because we got the estimates, and then just really, this is just too much. The, the project is too big, and we can't figure out, it's too tight of a deadline at this point.
Yeah, like one day at the point that we. Try to figure it out. It just did not seem like it was responsible or.
So the application's in the system, because I, you know, started an application, but according to Paul, or excuse me, Tim, it doesn't affect us in any way. It'll just go away for the next year. So Taylor, we did receive the check for on Stewart's for fifteen hundred bucks, and then start buying some furniture. And I think that if we find that we don't need all of the furniture that she had budgeted for, I'm going to buy books about diversity and just try and keep our collection going with that. As soon as we actually have all that done, I'm going to do a press release. As like, and I'll send it out to all of the different places to say, you know, with Taylor, and I'm hoping she'll be able to come in and take some pictures and stuff. Our photocopy release is over this month. I'm still waiting to get a proposal from Northco for a new machine. Because right now, if that machine breaks, it will cost more to fix it than it will to actually get another one. So because it's so old.
I'm sorry, can you say that one more time?
He said that it will, it will cost more if we need to fix it than just getting a new machine. So.
It's called Northco?
Northco, yeah, yeah. So I don't, he, they were supposed to get me a proposal for a new machine, but I haven't gotten it yet. So as long as it stays at the forty-two bucks a month and the same kind of, the user, excuse me, the supply piece that we have today, I think that we should continue with it, just because it's a good, it's a good project, program.
I'm sorry, I don't want to say it. It reminded me, though, a random thing. When Tistria was here for the live at the library, her kids were inside. We were chatting for a minute. She noticed the Northco thing, and she mentioned that they also do, that's loving to use them for printing things, and that they're very affordable and good to work with, blah, blah, so.
Yeah, okay, great. That's awesome to know. Like I said, our blood drive was nice and was very successful. We had our goal was twenty-nine units, but we actually collected thirty-nine. So that was pretty great. And also, you know, I can keep track of, we've had six total drives that I've done, and we've collected a hundred and eighty-nine units of blood. So that's a pretty good amount for a tiny little town that needs to get to come to this. So we're going to get, our next one is in December, December twenty ninth.
I guess they're in dire need of a positive platelets because they're calling me like every five minutes.
I did the same thing, and I'm like, I just donated. I can't donate again. Stop calling me. They're in dire need for everything at this point. Summer reading went really well. We had, you can see my statistics. I had eight registered teenagers, three of whom completed the program. I had twenty-four children ages five to ten, registered thirteen completed the program. And I had for babies and toddlers, seventeen registered, and then eleven completed. So that was a, that's a decent number. It's not, it's usually the how it goes. It's usually half and half, like half register and then half actually finish. So it's, it's hard to get. As a parent who signed my kids up many times and then never finished the program, I understand how hard it is. They, but nine hundred and forty-four books were read altogether by all of these kids. Yes, it was. It was, and it was interesting trying to count them up. And normally, you either can count, New York City either asks for how many books read or how many minutes were read. I go by the books. Apparently, there's a change in that too this year.
Babies and toddlers, I'm sorry.
Babies and toddlers, seventeen registered and eleven completed. The one thing I did a little differently this year was we did bingo cards. So I gave age-appropriate bingo cards for kids to do those special activities. And when they completed the bingo card, they brought it in, and they all got a free book from Braveheart Books. So, or they got a little ticket to go get it, to go up there. And so we had actually fifteen kids complete the bingo challenges, which is nice to see, you know. So that was good. And then the last thing is that I've been working on updating the formatting of the policies, which everybody has. So we can see that and let you know. I stole the policy format from East Green Bush. So, because I liked the way it looked, but if anyone is not crazy about that, just let me know. Start over, and I put together the sexual harassment is just word for word what we already had. The conflict of interest is also word for word what we had. And then the internet use policy is the one that I, they just, I wrote, trying to get a mishmash of different places, like things that I thought were pertinent to us. So I don't know how we want to work on that too. But, and if you're curious about my camping storytime, we had camping storytime, and they loved it. And we painted with marshmallows, and I'd never seen so many kids so happy painting with marshmallows. So it was a lot of fun, so.
It was really cute.
It was, they were great. It was so much fun to do.
People really responded to that picture on Facebook, too.
Yeah, yeah, now I'm going to step off my game.
Follow up question from last month, Jody and her hours and.
Yeah, I don't have a plan yet. We're still looking. Jody actually has a person in mind that she's wondering if maybe this person might be interested in working. So she's going to send him on to me and see where we are. But now I'm still, still looking and trying to figure that out.
How, how?
She says until the time changes. When the time changes in November, that's when she's going to be. She'll want to only do the morning or the afternoon hours. So if anyone knows anybody, let me know.
And was there any, anything follow up with Lorelei helping with children's stuff?
No, I haven't gotten any of that. The cards on my desk, so I will now call her.
Since comments. We'll talk about the policy administration.
Absolutely.
Treasurer's report. Okay, we are still right on track. The three quarters of the year completed and seventy-two percent of our budget spent. We're in good shape with a fifty-six thousand plus cushion through the end of the year, and we still have a few fundraisers yet to come. As you mentioned, Kim, our fundraiser numbers of late haven't, they've been kind of underwhelming if we take. Library, the pop-up wasn't a great success. And I guess we'll talk about the dollar and where things stand with that. I, I think we'll, we'll need to think about how we can do things to do better. That's, that's. Questions, comments on treasurer's report?
She has some questions. Any will feel, is that something that happens later in the year?
Yes.
Okay. And a Stewart's donation for seven fifty, that's something like different than what the. Yeah, the holiday match. I'm sorry, I'm like asking questions people already.
No, it's good to ask.
There's an equipment charge for five twenty-five that wasn't budgeted for. It might be like old stuff that nobody reminded us, right? This is my personality looking closely. That was for our firewall license. That's good for three years or five years. So which was, we learned the hard way not having it because we got.
So that's really certainly.
And there were expenses for the zoo could be less. So those are, the zoo is, we were given ten thousand dollars to buy books. Okay. So all of those, I've been, we've been using them throughout the year, but.
Okay.
Grand after years.
And did the money come in this year or did it come in like previous?
It was.
Three years ago now.
At least three years on, so.
Okay. Thank you. Thanks for reviewing carefully.
Appreciate. Yeah, so it's been a great boost to our collection. The only stipulations that he, that was put on it is that it has to be New York Times bestsellers, which we buy anyway, so it worked out perfect. So hopefully, we'll.
Okay, fundraising community report, so. So on the subject of the Live at the Library donations. So Kim put together a spreadsheet with the results from last year and this year, and it's definitely not great this year. So this year, we had two forty-nine in donations, sixty, excuse me, yeah, six, six, I was going to say can't remember, right? It's typed. Sixty-six in purchases and forty dollars in the raffle. We had had a goal of four hundred dollars. And previous year, we had donations of seven fourteen dollars. But I do have a question, Ken. The one thing is that I'd like to look at our numbers, the actual number of participants year to year. But so on each of these, so you said that the amount given to the historical society. But did they pay for half?
Yeah, they, they haven't paid for this half yet. Then, when we started this, I saw, Bev told me that they were on board, so I have to.
Because like, if not, then I wouldn't know, we should give them half the donation.
No, yeah, exactly. I haven't given them the actual donations yet. They're still sitting in my desk. I have to send them a letter.
Yeah, so with the, the cost this year of eighteen seventy-five, that's, if we, I think if we look at the number of people who were there, and we factor in also who was actually there, it wasn't us and Bobby.
Yeah, no, I think we need to completely reevaluate. Yeah, yeah, I think so, too.
And last year didn't seem to cost them much either, so.
That's because we didn't have, well, because I had some newer people who are cost more. Right, that's why it was.
Do you think if we had it much less frequently and actually charged something non-of all, nothing expensive, but just something that makes people feel committed that they're, they're paid some.
Technically, we can't.
Oh, we can't?
No, we can ask for supply money, but I think it was put in the bylaws that we're offering free programs.
So all. Approaching.
No, I was going to say maybe doing like once a month for the three months, or, you know, just something different.
Really, yeah, I think like.
Yeah, that, and also find, look, look at who was the most popular.
Or who might have the potential to, like, I think if we do it as more of a thing, that if we have more established people. That, that we make, you know, if we try to find like wannabe genre or something, too, that we say, hey, if you're. What part of our mission is it to have constitutes? What, what are we, what's the, the thing? You know what I mean? Like, why are we having? I think, I guess it would be part of the sort of the community program thing, thing where people reach cultural programming. So the culture aspect, you know, this community center for the. But so, so maybe we don't want to have. What, what else? Juggling. Storyteller. I think it's hard to know what people, I mean, we've had people. I think it's hard to know what people, I mean, we've had people, it seems like people. Like music and we've had certain programs and been very, that have been popular, like the Irish program and the other classical program and things. We had indoor.
Right, right.
Um, and I think it's something that people like and it's not. As much availability here, but I think. It has to be different than what's being offered, like you say, that we're having the same people that are playing. In our other local venues, it might not be the same, but if we bring in somebody where it is like, it's like a pay the Irish music or it's this music. Then maybe it's something that people are actually, you know, coming to as an event.
Also, Paul Raider had asked if we could have an open mic night.
Yeah.
Um.
Those are never.
No, yeah, mics are great for people who want to play at the open mic, but.
Right, but I mean.
Also, it's your neighbors, so there's some, some sort of, um, pleasure in that.
Twenty dollars a head and guarantee like seven people.
So I think we'll talk more about sort of how we approach this next year in the, in the new year, um. Uh, on the anniversary event, so current status, a few, sorry, a few changes, uh, as the last day or two, but. Close enough until we have a full report, so tickets sold, I think now we're at forty or forty-one, um. The, we're expect, I think that we can expect probable attendees, I'm gonna say forty-five, our goal was fifty-five. So it's not shameful or embarrassing at this point, it's not quite where we hoped to be. Um, and we did get quite a few donations, so we were at, uh, over fifteen hundred dollars in donations, um. So, overall.
That number, how many people are close to the nation?
Um, pretty much everybody, there's a few people that are new name or newish names or people that I I had, I'm not familiar with. Um, probably maybe ten of those people, I would say are. Adjacent versus.
If you had, um, board members in their spouses, what the number.
Uh, I have to think of that, I mean, yeah, it's. Yeah, no, I know what you're asking, there definitely are people. And there's also, so we had, um, so we had somebody who donated separate from this, uh, he was giving his annual donation. And he has extremely generous employer match. So bringing his total donation up to a thousand dollars, the match, which is quite nice, um, so I contacted him. Um, he asked, he emailed to say, to send in the form and everything, uh, and. Yeah, he works for the, um, Open Society Foundations, I was called, uh, George Soros's. Foundation or whatever, um, and I'm sorry, and so I emailed with him and I thought. It seems like somebody who might be good to consider for board or just closer to the library, um. And I said, we would say, I have two tickets for him in the sort of acknowledgement of his gift, but not exactly the same, so we could still get the match. Um, so him and his wife are gonna be attending, so we have a couple, yeah, great, so we have a couple people that are. People we should be trying to chat with and see, you know, their interest in the library and and um. Trying to get them a little bit more, you know, connected and involved, um, so, you know, I think this has brought a couple of of people in that. Maybe weren't coming in other, other ways or things we can connect with them on, at least.
So just to answer your question, um, twenty-three of the tickets sold are not library, like. Board members, so it's not a bad, yeah, it's not a bad number, and there are some people in here who are bought tickets that are coming that. I have seen only come to the library to borrow stuff like that, I've never, you know, I've never seen them outside of going to programs or anything like that, so. We're actually drawing in a few people that hopefully will be. Maybe good.
Um, Toby was very kind to volunteer to do follow-up calls, so in addition to the invitation, you know, all that, we did do follow-up calls. Which was helpful because it also gave us a little bit of idea why people said they weren't coming, so there were a couple people who were still on that plane, so we. There are a couple people who, um, I was too expensive, it's one person. I I talked to somebody and I made a couple of follow-ups, I talked to somebody in Berlin, I was like, okay. So we got a little, you know, some people have plans and whatever, but, um, so. I think where you can, I think estimated net, we can look at three thousand dollars, um, it depends on how well it's in the raffle and the. Auction, things like that, does in our final tally with the restaurant, but, um, you know, it's fun, it's not bad, and it. It's been some work, but it's not been a ton of work, you know, all things considered, um.
But it's also a celebration of the library. Milestone, you know, so there's lots of. In addition to them.
I did have one person say to me that they were excited when they thought it was a celebration and then there was fundraiser and that didn't include the whole community, things like that aspect. You have a lot of things that we can do that aren't like free programs, like. One thing that is, I had turned it on fundraiser, so.
Right, I had somebody say like they were not happy with that, it was, um, you know, really cool, can't be beaten to the next thing, maybe it should be more inclusive. You know, so everyone can go, but then I let them know that we're having the holiday market and we're doing the Santa thing and, you know. We're continuing to do all of the things to, you know.
And were they at the contract this summer?
Right, exactly. I don't know, maybe I'll do a kids program like a happy birthday library, you know, and then people can bring their children and them. Yeah, cake tasting.
I also saw, um, the Nassau Library did a teen program, like a bake off. Thing, I was gonna mention it, but they, it was like they had a kit that they could pick, the teens could pick up. And then they brought final thing in. That would, that'd be a bunch of you sometime.
Yeah, I agree, like, especially teen, I think that might be a fun thing like that. But we don't want to do just for fun, we want to have competition on it.
I just celebrate Steven Town, that was a big thing, but people really liked those, you know.
Jody suggested, um, a chili contest, chili cooking contest, you know, and I thought, that doesn't sound like a bad idea too, we can just have little holes and.
Make a good chili.
That's you.
Ooh, it's on. I'm sorry, I always wanna bring this up except that I brought it up because. Yes, food issue, like food or some baked goods, but it's health department, yeah, I'm just saying because I was told it. Yeah, I I know that. So, i- in in terms of annual appeal, just to say, I think several of us have talked about the fact that there's a risk that the, that. That we will see less response to the annual kill because people who donated to this, um, and so we're gonna just have to analyze that.
But you know, I have thought that too, but during COVID, when I thought, oh my gosh, we're not gonna get anything because, you know, people are out of work.
But people.
Was, it was amazing.
Yeah, yeah.
People had been like mad during COVID and also people had no.
Yeah, true.
Yeah, that was.
And people had money coming in.
Yeah, yeah. So we are gonna push it back a little bit and do a little bit more of a year end, it's always sort of. Year end-ish, but last year I think we went out in October, um, so a little bit later, which I know. Creates a budget issue in terms of when the money all come rolling in, but.
Close to when people are more likely to do this too.
Yeah. So that's fundraising, any other questions? Uh, we are doing the raffle and so well raffle tickets and we're doing the time auction for bird feeders.
The raffle tickets are a bunch of donations from the local.
Um, and we're gonna bring the credit card stuff with us so that people can use that. That to be just.
Oh, the other thing I should say on the fundraiser is, so we are gonna need a few people to do things on that day, so Sarah, Toby and I. Are setting, are doing initial setup on, um. Tomorrow, uh, Tuesday. Um, and the, the entertainer is going to, um, come and. Scope out his setup as well, um. On the day of, we'll go a little bit early to bring the rest of the setup items like the, the raffle and anything we don't wanna bring early, early.
We're gonna need the P A there.
What's that, what time do you need the P A there?
Probably like an hour or so before, huh?
They do have a P A system there too.
Oh. You should, yeah.
Little ones, it's little, so I don't know.
So maybe tomorrow. I'll do it for him, yeah, okay, we can do that. Um, and it's portable screen upstairs, Kim?
Yes, it's in, I can, I'll show you where it's in a big long box.
Okay. Um, my mom would like to do, uh, raffle tickets because she wants something to do and she can hear enough to do that. Uh, we will need somebody to check people in and give them their drink tickets, we'll need somebody to help with, um, Sandy Schuman, the entertainer, set up and. Change the slides and and things like that, um, and probably have some. Uh, help, making sure we're getting photographs and and things like that, as well as, you know, mainly with people. Okay, thank you. Um, does anybody else, is it, I mean, I don't want to either, but does anybody want to say anything, uh, have anything to say during this? Not exactly sure how logistics of this will work, I'm assuming sort of. Shortly before the entertainments, like we'll just be mingling and stuff and then shortly before the entertainment, have a chance to. Say something, acknowledge blah blah, um, and then after the entertainment, people can just kind of finish mingling, we'll do the. A little bit after that, you can do the, um, draw the raffle tickets and stuff.
What about, Kim, would you be willing to say something about the slideshow, sort of about the history of the library? So that people know what they're looking at when they look at this slide, I mean, maybe it's obvious.
No, it's sort of, I, I, I don't have a tremendous amount of slot of pictures, uh, we have some, but not a huge amount, so it's just gonna, I'm just gonna have it all. Which reminds me, we need to get the projector. Um, but I was also gonna take some of the photos that we have, like, I know we have some photo albums and bring those, then you can just have people in walks through those and stuff, so. And then I also found, um, you know, things like old bookmarks that we've made for the library or fundraiser things, you know, just kind of like a. Put it on a board or something, just has a, like, remember when.
That'd be great. Is there anything people think that we should include that we talk, I mean, I was gonna do, gonna do a generic, you know, kind of thing. They're gonna raise their support and, but the library does for the community and. Thank you and thank you for, any other ideas of things we should touch on? Don't forget to thank the restaurant.
All right.
All right, thank you.
And, and, uh, um. Businesses that donated.
Yes.
I'm happy, yes, yeah. If there's like volunteer stuff that you need, I'd have to help too, so.
Okay.
All righty. Is there something that you said we need that is still uncovered in terms of something that we need people to do happy then?
Uh, I mean, I think we can figure it out that day, but we'll need somebody to, who wants to sort of help Sandy set up and logistics and getting that going and helping with that. Changing the slides, um. Got somebody for the raffle, got somebody for greeting and checking in, and then just. If people can be taking pictures, if they have an opportunity to, while sort of mine, we can, what we can take. I don't think we'll need anybody outside for parking, because I think we have signs and I think it'll be obvious enough, but. So, side of it. And it's, we didn't say this, but like, I I'm assuming this is a fairly casual thing, so, like, don't anybody like dress up a lot.
Um, what time do you want?
Probably an hour early, probably would be, would be good. If anybody wants to carpool together as well, I mean, is, there is some other parking that we can have across the street, which we can, if you can limit our, our cars. So, so we need to do that one.
Um, yeah, just don't park across the street. Um, to park up the hill if we have, if we need overflow parking. Person who owns property across the street is not very happy with them, so.
So up the hill like the oil.
That was the real issue, yeah.
Yeah, so then it's, then it's obviously a park.
There's gonna be safe signs.
Yeah, it's just gonna be on the road.
Isn't Sandy Schuman also?
Yeah, it's not weird, I know, I know, I know, have the, I'm gonna be sending, everybody who's attending, send in an email address and email. And advance, just to remind people and that'll be.
It turns out actually that Sandy Schuman is an old friend of my neighbor's and he said he's fantastic. So he's coming in, this is why we're coming to this because Sandy. All right, so.
Okay, sorry.
So we have not, Kim and I were going to meet before this meeting, that we would have somebody back here and we want people to do two line misses. So we're going to meet next Monday, but I would love to schedule now a meeting or sometime for the end of the month. For anybody who wants to sit down and we talk about for next year, what things should look like. If it's, it's time. So I don't know how many people are interested in that, um, if you are interested, if you wanna throw out, like, oh, Tuesday nights work for. I'm interested on the way until the twenty-eighth, so if it's the end of the month.
And I'm interested and I'm also away the weekend of twenty-fifth, so I would be available after.
So what if we?
Funny how that goes.
Uh, so would people prefer in the evening or? A Sunday afternoon or?
I would prefer if we stay away from the weekends, um, but.
So, so maybe. Mondays or Thursdays are better for me. So how about Monday after the third?
That works.
Over here.
Anybody else?
We have a meeting on. That was a question.
We, if, yeah, yeah, we really need to get going on it and it's gonna be a process. So we'll get started and then. Feed into. Yeah.
Um, what time on the day? Okay, I'm available. Anytime after, say. It'll be, it'll be more, 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 less painful than the roof now, right? On the third or something, yeah, whatever should be.
Let's do six thirty.
And Kim, what time do you wanna meet on the nineteenth? Um. Well, I have doctors when the ten twenty, so I could do something in the afternoon, like noon maybe or somewhere around there.
Can we do a little later and then?
Yes, actually, that was fine.
I know, I guess too, if anybody has any thoughts either on format that Kim. And presented before. You know, send that along and if anyone.
Probably send a couple other things out to people too, like this little project you served.
Okay.
Thanks.
Okay. Major projects, um, as alluded to, there's really no update at the moment because we are going to be needing to. Try and evaluate more of what um they have presented to us or plan, estimated costs. I think we have some reckoning to do with all that before we can move forward, so.
Did you see that we got a donation from somebody to plant a tree at a sponsor store? Yeah, so I just wanted to make sure you saw that.
Yeah, that's totally random.
So we'll be planting a tree.
And then, uh, building your grounds, any updates?
We're still attached.
We're still, yeah, we're still just going.
Building's still standing.
Still standing.
Well, cover the last seating.
Did you, oh, is it?
It's a weird thing.
You did discover sort of why though.
Possibly could be fixed in. I might actually.
There are actually a couple of boards that are rotting on the, on the deck that we should look at too, now that they're remembering that. Yeah, they're not, so, so.
No.
Well, leads to, they're carrying down like half of the porch.
Oh, oh.
Yeah, they were, they were gonna pour sidewalk and. They must, they took like one little piece that went off and realized it's rotten and that led to well, but how far is it rotten? Be careful what you look at.
I don't know, I'm, one of them I think is almost unsound and that was the one, like, it's got a little bit of a dividend, so. That's here, she's got the light, she's been taken to the hospital, we'll be fine.
Alright, moving on to branded marketing.
Okay, I think we've covered off on most everything, um. Then were you able to fix the gallery glitch or figure out?
Not yet, no, that I have to talk.
We still have that and still the volunteer fee.
Volunteer page still has to be done in the gallery, yeah, and everything else except for I still haven't figured out how I want to do the, the museum pass. Um, okay, putting those in, but other than that, it's all.
It's all, it's all there, so. Speed pretty much, yeah. Um, the new resident welcome event, um, everybody probably remembers that we had people that were interested in being paired with um us, basically. There were four sponsored pairings and we went out to the dinner at Norte, which brought us all to come down with some horrible donors that we still all have. But it was, it was a great, a great success. Um, and um, the new people really loved it and they, I know that Abby, you spent quite a bit of time. Yeah.
So she'll do her thing, so.
It was for Shelby anymore, yeah.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, yeah, I really like her.
Yeah, and she wanted to have a potluck dinner when I was supposed to send out an email about that, remember today that I didn't do that, um. So just, just to see, uh, for the people that um signed up, if they would be interested in something like that here in, in the community room, so I'll. I still have to figure out how to craft it, whether I should be mentioning a day or just seeing if you like the idea and that will be this kind of thing. Probably why I didn't do it. But I will probably do that, um, and if I wait long enough, it'll be time for our, our new event, if we're gonna do another one. Um, we're gonna do one six months after the one that we had, so that we need to think about that. Few months.
Right, say after the holidays.
Right, or early winter, maybe like a, um. You know, like, wow. It is where I was going.
Maybe the cabin fever can be the potluck and we don't need to do quite as much, we can just kind of be more free, free. Um, what else? Uh, we're back, we're entering the, our story bridge oral history program, it did seem like there was a whole lot of consensus around wanting to move forward. And we're struggling already with um just keeping the board members that are in place now, in place, so, um. It's not dead, but uh we'll, we'll revisit it when things are looking, we'll know how to figure. Um, we, uh, you talked about the Hater Day, Jane, it was probably one of the better attended adult programs. In a long time, um.
Did you get a feel from people how they heard about it or like what, draw them in or anything, help us for other events? Say it again.
I don't know if, if some of the people that were on the Zoom were from my exercise class than it was, but I don't know, because I couldn't see them. Um, um. But otherwise, no, we, I didn't really ask, um, Janet was there, so. But I think it was pretty well.
And I know several people who didn't attend who mentioned it and their feeling was just that they already felt that they were aging positively.
Jerry Robinson was there. Yeah, and we've already talked about uh creating posts and press release for the holiday market and, and flyers. Those for their, I'm sure, so that's it.
Uh, recruitment, so I think just to say at this point that we're round two, we, we have two. Could know, two open positions, I think we should all do our best during the seventh event to chat people up. And see anybody who might be good potential, um, at least they've gotten that far, we know they're interested that much.
Well, we don't want to see you desperate.
Well, I don't know.
He asked me about. So, you know how Dan and Heather do the market, the board, so I had invited Dan's wife. So he had told Heather that. And she was asking if we were looking for, for. I don't know, she was saying she would like to be a board member, I was kind of non-committal about it because I wasn't sure. So, but anyways. She acquired.
Okay, that's good to know.
And um Richard's thinking about it. Yeah, he's, he's thinking. So I guess he, I, I don't know if he's still, if he's got one less board that he's on right now, but um, he said he. He seriously said, I'm, I'm considering it. He was gonna talk to you about it.
What's his last name again?
I don't know how to pronounce it, but it's D A U C H E Y. Oh, she, oh, she. Yeah, I don't, I don't know. But he's, he's, he's fun, yeah, he'd be a character to have.
This is so incredible. Okay, you say? Um, our campus over. Ari and I met and I think we. Everybody got happy, uh, the breakdown of Kim and so far we are under budget. For you, maybe. Everybody.
I think it's in the file.
Um, so.
This is just, this is the budget.
But I sent away, just a side by side person, uh. Everything youth committee up to this point this year, which is basically everything at the Halloween party, that's all we have learned.
And teammates.
And teammates, yeah, we're not gonna go over budget on teammates.
And a lot of stuff tomorrow, so.
So. Yes, we are under budget by one thousand seven hundred and seventy-eight dollars. And we still have to take them in tent, so.
And that hundred bucks that they gave us were indivisible, they wanted to, to go towards putting the tent down because they're using it so late. So, okay, we can do that.
So we should now get something when you are.
Yeah. Yes, there's one more.
Have them scheduling them to take it down.
We might want to look into cleaning, like how.
Didn't we have that done before?
We did, yeah, but um. I don't. Yeah, we didn't have it done.
We have that, so it must have been. I, I will. Yes. And if anybody, so. We've been using the same tree month tent service in April Park, we just pay them to put it up and take it down. Pay them to clean it, there are things like more than double this year. So we will, I just wanna shop around and see where else is out there, if anybody else knows about a tent company. Do you want, they, would you do Christmas trees, rated lines, Billy, you headed to? One at Jeff's or the one on? No, past Jeff a little bit further down, they used to keep a part of supply in the tents.
Yeah.
And then his mom actually lives further out to six within tents, they're always. Juliana, Juliana, something like that, they used to do all of that stuff, I'm not sure, seems like that building's. But, but their library people do, they have to cafe. So do they have a company like? So, but I'm not, I'm the. If you think that, if you have a name or number, let me know.
Didn't the last guy at the library? Um, play with Mike. He was talking about the fact that he's worked this tent company and the install thing and. I don't know about that one. Yeah, it sounds something about that he used to work setting up tents and. And the, the tent company's still in business, and I think there was a whole thing about when you just got married and. And it's just putting it and taking it down, it's not providing the facts, we don't.
We own the tent, yeah, we don't need the tent, at one point, long ago, we used to have volunteers take it down and put it up and it was just. So, yeah, we do pay for them to put it up. Um. See, um, Ari and I, we did the budget for next year, which I handed out, um. I have, I said at the town, our mini budget so far, uh. How much we've spent so far, I have not backed DJ, which I assume is, he's happy with it, he likes it and doesn't have any issues.
Okay, I was planning on going on to the meeting on Monday, so.
So. Um, do you wanna talk about the new budget or?
Um, well, we just, we went through and updated the budget for next year. Uh, and increased about three thousand dollars. Which mostly is because of, uh. Salaries and the increased cost of like everything and um. Mostly the tent and things like that, but we did, we broke down the supplies by. Instead, rather than just having supplies with a big number, we kind of broke it down by, we definitely always need. Sort of crafty things and then snack, which we. Broke that down by, I think that comes out to twenty dollars a day, first snack to supplement, but.
Just in case, we don't know for next year.
Yeah. This might change, just so you know, I got an email from Debbie Fleming, who's works for the rest of county. They are submitting to OCFS for twenty nine hundred dollars for reimbursement this year. Normally we, it's, it's nineteen ninety-five, um, so she's saying, she just said we submitted the amount of twenty nine hundred for it. For you and we're waiting for the approval. She doesn't see why it would, she said I would submit for that amount as I've never seen them reject it, so.
For the last income of.
What was the name of the person?
Debbie Fleming is her name.
Yeah, like county universal, for the town. Basically. We haven't really touched the budget except for a minimum wage since two thousand and eighteen, because. Any changes we made in twenty and twenty-one, we just figured were temporary, so we just kind of rearranged the numbers there, so this is. The numbers we were looking at before, except for wages, were all from years ago, so. I'm not sure, Jen and Kim probably have a better read on what the town board will say to an increase, but. We kind of throw it out there and then we have our idea of where we'll. We have not submitted, so.
And so if there's two in September, right? But not for this meeting, not for this September meeting.
It was, yeah, it was in the.
But this is pretty much ready unless people have, yeah, um, suggestions of things to change and, you know, we need to change the accounting reimbursement.
And it's more when you did not, Chris Matt, did that, did that really? Well, a hundred a week, we're not eating the lunch, yeah, so I think that's. Sort of like the idea of like getting like a big box of goldfish for a day and that's like the extra snack. And that is. Yeah, and it doesn't even use or anything like that, because you get plenty of juice. We figured, because when we met, met with Jessica and Taylor and talked about the snacks and the supplement, you know. They have a better idea of like, nobody liked the carrot sticks, so we're gonna hand it over to the, the director. Me to me, they can go get their snacks up and figure out what were most popular.
Was that also, um.
I think we'll have to see what the lunches are, I mean, hopefully it goes back up.
Yeah.
A conflict was made, right, about the lunches? Yeah.
Yeah. Um, and the busing, so even if the, um, number of campers goes up. Where you would need two buses again, do you think that's still?
I think it's still fine, I don't know how. I mean, what they charged us for the busing wasn't really much more than what they charged us in two thousand and nineteen, I expected like a huge.
Yeah.
Increase of gas and, you know, lack of bus drivers.
Yeah, really.
They don't always make sense. Um, we did, one thing we said we would look at, so we charge right now for an out of town camper. Three hundred and fifty for four weeks. We did one thing we said we would look at, so we charge right now for an out of town camper, three hundred and fifty for four weeks. And the way we came about that is we took our total budget for camp. The camp is supposed to cover at least sixty kids, so we divided it by sixty and we came up with a. Estimate of how much it costs an hour per child. So, I mean, the one thing we might consider if the town box set are increases, this reason that out of town. So last summer we had two.
Yeah.
But and this in twenty twenty-five, we didn't. We purposely, I think we were the same too, but we purposely didn't go out and try to find out if there were some small and close. But I wanna say before COVID, we would have a few at least.
I think we had at least four.
Also, I think we've done this figured out with the costs of. Each camper.
It has, yeah, so. And so three hundred and fifty for four weeks is very. And like Berlin doesn't have a camp, I think, would you say, I just suppose there, yeah.
So actually, we have one, two, three, four, five. Oh, wait, this is like one, two. Uh, seven, eight. Nine. In twenty seventeen, we have nine out of town.
So there, I mean, like, yeah, I know Berlin does not a camp, but you know, there's a. Potentially go out and market towards.
And just raising it a little like.
Yeah, and yeah, and the time like that. So, and you know, if you live in Berlin and you're sending your kid here to camp, they're going to camp at their school, so it's not like they're out of town.
Right, right, yeah.
We have five.
I thought the price of the East. Just curious, everything else being the same.
We overspent. I think we just hadn't raised it in like three years.
Yeah.
It just, yeah, and you need to.
Price of getting enough, so good for the price of all the different activities that we do and then we have in the past split. These are part, or actually, no, we did split it this year too.
Yeah, we did that one. We did in twenty twenty, we did like a grab and go thing and that. That we split with the library. Yeah, again, it just kind of. And we did. Offer the director and assistant director an increase. That's a salary position, so. The counselors get minimum wage, which keeps going up every year, every year. But we wanna make sure that the director and assistant director are still making. Way.
More, yeah.
Senior counselors per hour, and they do put in more hours than just. Questions on the budget or? Any data, how you think that?
I mean, yeah, I mean, I think they're really concerned with an increase because of other concerns with. Costs of other things that are going out. We're still gonna be under the same. Um, limitations of the caps that they have heard for town budgets, so.
But just the fact that they're concerned, everything's going up.
Right, I mean. Exactly, right, exactly, yeah, so.
I did, I think I CC'd you on the email that I want to send. Current status to PJ, I didn't kind of think that we were going to.
Yeah.
I wasn't expecting. Other than that, we've been holding teenage, which has been successful, we've been to do that. I think every third Thursday, it was through summer and let's see. I saw it saying on Facebook. I wasn't paying with attention, really cool. Yeah, a lot of it's about getting repeat customers and laboring their. And there are good. Um, we will start planning the Halloween party. If anybody wants to help them.
Doing.
I think we should go back to the old way of doing a costume party or the costume contest at least, where they go around and circle.
And I'm assuming it'll be back inside.
And he keeps everybody.
Hard to manage, yeah, exactly, yeah.
And then you have that many more people who are, like, I didn't give out half the prizes, no one claimed. Now, because everyone, people have left by the time.
All right, anything else on you?
Oh, it's really. Yeah, I don't know, anybody else, please, so I just wanted to try and clear. Internet use policy, this is a new one. Yes, so maybe we can just put it in a municipal vote and on the next time, so folks have a chance to actually review it.
I, yeah, because it definitely needs, I'm sure it needs revision. Just the first draft, so.
And you, I think, I might wanna change action of the form. If it makes sense to anybody other than me, is the date of last revision, I would maybe make that last review. Working under the assumption that we might review some of these policies and how it actually revise.
So we can change that right now.
Because revision dates are captured in the version history.
Yeah, like, because if you got another version, that would be. Okay, I'm, I changed that on, I'll change it on all of them.
I have one comment about the. The new policy. The internet use policy. Which was. It sounded like. It was putting a little bit of the onus on like the whole pornography, pornography thing and on the. On the staff.
It kind of is though, because if we don't catch it, you're the ones who are watching, we're the ones who are gonna be around it, so it's kind of like. We don't go and review what people are doing.
Right, but but if we stated that they are, they should not do this, 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 and this. The the reason I mention it is because in that. Whenever I watched, they were saying, one of the things that's really valuable about policies is it takes the onus off the staff. It's like, here's what our policy says. So if it's, if it states this, 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 and that way. Are not to do this, 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 and this, and and I mean, then you can have the stuff about the staff, but it's not their decision. It's not their saying.
Right, right.
Okay, I'll, I'll think about wording, but that was the only thing that kind of jumped out at me is it might kind of put them in an uncomfortable position.
Um, yeah, it's gonna be an uncomfortable position. More uncomfortable position and if we just stated, it's up to the staff to say what's porn and what's not. Basically, you know, or what's appropriate, what's illegal, what's not.
It's. Subjective thing. We had, it had a bit of security guard. We had somebody, we had thirty iPads that people used to. To go through and hear other things, the museum. And the last night. Left them all on a Roda statue of a naked woman's body. So it's not pornography, it's our website, it's our TV, but for three girls to come in in the morning. And go in every single one in the giant statue. Clearly, there was an intent there for it to be. But it's still inappropriate.
Right, could be.
I completely.
If we can figure out another way to write that or word that.
Yeah, just if there might be some way to make it more. Clear what you're not supposed to do and that's part of the policy and then, you know, the stat. They see you're giving that.
Yeah, no, I think, oh, I'll think about. So. And the other thing is, I'd like to just make sure we circle Sandy. So she can review these as well and and then hopefully we can get her, I just, if somebody wants to be involved, I'll try to. Bring him in for something else, but. And she might have some thoughts on the whole internet thing too. Did you send those to her or do you want me to send the ones that I just did? And I think we're gonna try to do. The other one thing you turn you on.
Sarah and I met and and looked at that stuff, so there's one coming up, Manchester, something like that, right? Uh, yeah, so, and I wanted to meet with you too, Kim, maybe sit sometime. In the wintertime, I have time to do some of this typing and. Or whatever, so.
That would be fantastic.
There was some formatting that needs to be done to migrate everything over to this format, right?
Oh, yeah, we don't have, there is no formatting on any of the things I've ever done, so it's all a mishmash of just Word documents. So it all needs to get put into this format, a single format we wanna use. So. Yeah, and some of the things need to be typed up. Some of the things are still on paper and they are electronic. We don't have electronic, so we have to go through all of that.
Yeah, so if you're out of reach out and maybe set up sometimes in the next few months and.
That sounds great.
Be my, my wintertime project.
Sounds good to me. And I think we have to, as we vote on, we have to be sure, I think it's excluded in the agenda, so that's the posting, the power public posting.
Oh, right.
Something else administrative? Thank you, moving that forward.
All right, old business resolution, open meeting law. And I saw Tim Burke did send a email saying, yes, in fact, these, the open meeting exemptions are expiring today, so.
The openly legal goes back. Effect, new amendments, which we addressed to the. Understand that the law is very restrictive. It really doesn't provide that much. My assumption is that it won't be used, but nevertheless provides a little bit more flexibility than something like. So it seems to make sense to do it, although the concept of extraordinary circumstances. But it's better.
Yeah, well, if it includes disability, illness, caregiving responsibilities, you know, that.
Yeah, that's true. I, I'm just. The requirement of the core to be here, they're just like, they don't make it easy.
No.
That's really my observations or like, based upon the experience. The experience of COVID, as miserable as it is, in connection with access to government and meetings. Provided an interesting experiment and framework, making it easier for folks to participate. And notwithstanding the technology and problems with hearing and people getting used to it. It really worked. So the fact that the legislature came up like this, which. Is making people crazy and doesn't really make it easier to participate in meetings or see what's going on. Is really. I'm done. Saying that, it's better than nothing. If anyone's got any comments, these documents were. I suggest that we go, unless there's some discussion or anyone's got any questions.
Just on what you said. The law is very restrictive, or maybe I'm a certain, the law is very restrictive, but it provides a bit more flexibility, more flexibility than what?
Than just having to show up at a meeting in person and not having. Conducted part of the meetings through.
Thank you. So if we just vote on this now and you insert the final.
Yeah, I, I, maybe we can. Make a motion to accept the resolution policy subject.
I make such a motion.
Do you want me to just put it into the new format? Yeah, so I'll do that and then I.
So there was a, I think one thing you didn't copy and paste and was like.
Yeah, I may have made a reference to another organization.
Yeah. All right, well, I'll make sure I read through it before I put it up on the website. Definitely put these up into our new policy section, so.
I'm sorry for disparaging, it is really great and.
It is just disappointing that we're not informing our future.
That they won't explain to the legislature, because there are people who are interested in the government. This is really bad decision and they should lighten up and like make it work. Speaking of someone who.
We are recording.
Our other old business, I think we already discussed the diversity program, so that's. Keep covered on already. Call for public comments. As you say, open meeting, no public, no comment. Uh, new business.
Some of you may know, I serve on the. And I represent ten libraries in a small area. There's been a word. As to. What should Hudson be doing, if anything more, in connection with sort of the library that aren't represented. And reaching out, doing out. And I suggested to. That maybe you should speak to the libraries as to what they, who the needs are, if any. This was just, you know, it's top down, bottom up kind of process, so. I'm sitting here going like, no one listens to cardboard meetings and. The stuff we do through the system is really important, but as someone on the board bench is, you do a pretty good job. They provide services and generally at that person's board level, we don't really talk about. That person's board level, we don't really talk about it. And you know, the stuff runs pretty smoothly. Um, and to the extent, I I compared some of my editorializing, but I I'm. I I just wanted to share this with you because I'm sort of interested and the I, well, let me finish. Like, we do report occasionally as to what the libraries do, but that's sort of fluffy. I mean, it's very nice and it's interesting, but it really doesn't relate to what the board function is for the Upper Hudson Library. So there's this disconnect, so I guess my question for the group is. In terms of knowing that the system's out there, knowing that it provides services to member member libraries. Is there a need for outreach? What are you outreach for? What's the objective? Um, part of it is maybe PR and just. Letting people know what's going on. I just don't know.
Outreach from the system to the library?
Well, it would be through the representative, so I mean, there are libraries in the system that. The person on the board represents that in the library, but there are. Um, multiple folks on the board who supposedly represent the interests of. A number of libraries within a certain category within the county.
So what kind of things are you looking like, are you?
Well, I mean, what was suggested, should the board members go to? Other uh, board meetings of other libraries, small libraries in the district or. But I I I raise it because I don't like.
I'm sure you have time to head to another library.
If you're a small library that doesn't really have a lot of interaction with the system. And maybe you have like. One. Full-time staff person or something, so maybe they go to like the directors. I think some maybe a couple of times a year go to a board meeting. Might actually be a conduit to people.
Yeah, except the question of what I have is from the usual.
I think to explain what services are available.
That's for director, I always. But I think that I my my thought was that. The directors are the chief operating officer. They meet and they have exchanges and they seem the best conduit for what's going on operation.
Yes, that's exactly what I thought, because so we meet once a month when we have these questions about what's happening in Upper Hudson, how does this work? You know, Tim's letting us know, Mary, what's everybody, we talk about all this stuff. And in terms of things like outreach. Upper Hudson is already like their staff are doing things to try and help create more programming and more um. Opportunities for the smaller libraries, so it's not like what they're, it's not like we're not communicating, so I'm kind of. I don't know how it would change anything. I'd have to think about it.
Please, I mean, that that the reason I raised it is because. I like the idea, I mean, when I first got on the board and they told me I was representative. I said, I don't know nothing about. What do you want me to do? And the answer was, don't worry about it, you don't have to do it.
Maybe what would be better, instead of going to each individual library, would be a, because we meet. Well, I haven't been in a while, but like small libraries, we have a small libraries meeting. Or all libraries are tiny, get together and talk about what kind of issues we have. So maybe that would be the kind of a thing to go to those pro, those meetings to then, and that instead of having. Going to everybody's board meetings, maybe being a part of those conversations.
And how I just do this this fall library?
It's like, it's, it no, it's usually once a month, sometimes once every. Yeah, yeah, so.
But I would think we'd want.
No, it's just every.
The issue of the being, I think it's really interesting, I think the issue of it's a being, is the information then. Gather in these meetings, is it better passed up to the directors? Or the board members, I just know what I do on the board there and it's very limited to. Essentially working and supporting the staff of Upper Hudson in connection with. Their operations in connection with.
Right.
And it and it's not related specifically to.
What we're.
Specific library operation.
And I'm representing. The.
Let me just show you that there are no one.
Libraries or the boards for the libraries, like are you there as the. The the representative of those library boards? That's a good question. Different, yeah, if you're representing the libraries and so you're. You know, the what the director, I mean, that that would, that would change my answer. Sorry.
I agree, because I think there might be something that's more like that could help, like something with the board, also, who who is like. I didn't know anybody represented around, like who represents our library, like what, how does it work? So you do.
And as well as as one other person, Scott, small libraries. So. In connection with board functions and to the extent that Upper Hudson does training. That's one area that's possibly.
I was thinking, if I hadn't worked in the system for fifteen years. I would have no clue whatever happens at this point. And and part of that time, he excited to go to the. Because I forget why, but I had some excuse. But um, but so I think. If it's. If the if the conduit is between board members and the system. That might be a little. As to what, I mean, maybe. Maybe just reaching out to all of the board members a couple of fifth of the year. With a little like news, hey, we're the representative of the fall library.
You know, well, I think that may end up, I then may end up being where they end up. I don't see that particularly. Of great utility, I mean, to the extent, to the extent that board members don't know. What Upper Hudson does, that's probably. A failure of communication by the director, we mentioned, we're talking about the operations of the library. To the extent that you've got the lending program, you've got technical support, you've got. I mean, website support to the extent that the administrative support helped um. Um, procedures and manuals. And if you're listening to what's going on in the meeting, you're gonna hear that kind of. But I'm just saying, there's a lot of information that I certainly think that I've gotten here. From your perspective, I mean, I have a clue because since I'm on the board, I know what they do. Um, but that's that's related, I. I'm not, I the reason is, I'm not sure what I have in mind. Um, but I think it's interesting and I think. Very funny is I made these similar comments at the board meeting when when Susan brought it up, and I'm saying like. Yeah. And then I started talking and. And I was not even annoyed about it, but I'm just sort of saying. Acti- this kind of outreach activity needs to be focused on objectives. And. Realistic objectives based upon the board functions are, like, what we're doing within the board and. And you need to figure out the pieces, so you can figure out. Who should be saying what to whom and what information should be. Provided and who has the ability to change. And I think there's. That wasn't particularly well planned, I think it's a work in progress, so let's leave it at here, because this is getting late, I'm nagging on and on. But I think it's an interesting concept. But I mean, Upper Hudson in and of itself is a weird kind of organization. And it's an interesting relationship, I think it really works, I think they do a nice job. And.
I think what would be really cool is to hear from directors, success stories and things that they have learned from Upper Hudson or. You know, new programs that they. You know, something something really different that that um. They can share that other directors may not have thought.
Like, one of the things actually, as as you were, is one of the things that a trustee could do. I went through the um, the race. Um, and to the extent that. Libraries considering whether to do that or whether they want to participate. I certainly can speak to my experience, so what I found interesting about the program. That's certainly an area that, you know, based on my experience, I'm going to. Um, so there there are some things and. Absent going out and being pushed or something, but that's it's for like, you know. Or even notifying the libraries that, you know, these proceeds have gone through. If you're interested, I've got a big question, that that's one. Think about it, um.
A little, hey, you're gonna treat people that are very small.
I there's probably no document out there, I mean, yeah, the annual meetings, they. No, no, you're absolutely right, no one knows.
Yeah, and maybe even, I mean, if those, I mean, you do anyway, but what some other person is, that we don't even know. Like, if they attended like our annual meeting or something, so that there's just a.
Or a gallant dinner for.
Yeah, really.
The question is, why? And to what end and what benefits? So just showing up at a meeting, I mean. As delightful as our meetings are. If someone representing small libraries in Upper Hudson sat at this particular meeting. What would they get from that experience and what would we get?
Well, like at the annual meeting, they might just get an idea of being able to hear, okay, so what sort of. You know, if you hear the director's report, you get this, you get an idea of what actually we're we're. We're doing, what we might be struggling with, we have a chance to just know that, okay, there's somebody out there that um, we would connect to.
Three libraries that are.
Yeah, having seen.
Like, what's the name of the the bridge story, our our story, you know, if if you heard that there were three libraries that were all. Thinking about that, but we haven't actually told each other, you might think, it's a library thing, but that's. Guys are, or you might then at Upper Hudson. When they're talking about a grant proposal or an opportunity for a grant, should be applied for this or not, and you think, oh, wait a minute, I've heard from four of our libraries. Here, how they did this, geez, you know, so I mean, it could just be. Filing those things in the back of your head that you're carrying for a few months.
I think that's true.
Okay, I think my question is, is what is, what is the role that you would be playing as coming to? Yeah, what's the objective, what's the, because I don't. I'm trying to think of what what kinds of things does the board of Upper Hudson do?
We approve budgets, we look at contracts, we deal with personnel issues.
But personnel issues for Upper Hudson, whereas you guys. So, yeah, so I'm kind of like.
But the board function of that board member is focused on that entity. We are an entity which services libraries and. And sort of like the board input in connection with that is is theoretically. Based upon more libraries' experience for the libraries who you represent. In connection with the various services and functions which they provide. Does that seem to be working?
You all need to define the role there. We can tell you if you were doing it.
So I can assure you that if my role is representative of one, not doing it. Because I have not had any influence any of the other libraries, except when uh. I think we did library.
Board member here, you understand many of the trials and tribulations of a library, so you're representing. In that, you know, you might not be representing. They're specific.
Is everybody a board member of another library?
No, not necessarily.
Okay, could yeah, could mean that that could be weird if you're just like.
Yeah.
Whoever and you're on.
Um.
On merit, clearly.
How was I selected? I was recruited by. Was it um? I'm trying to think who was on the board prior.
Is she not on there anymore? Is she not on Upper Hudson?
No, I was, I was, I sort of.
So it's very similar to the way we do things, I don't know, somebody who might be on.
For everyone to know, if Scott starts talking about. Board position.
Yeah, really.
But the difference between. We we have staff. I don't know that. It's like the real sources and and the management. You do all work too.
Absolutely.
To the trustees.
Right.
Ongraving and for being involved in the operation, they're looking for our stage like.
Stage like guidance.
I did say, God, it's not a sage.
Yes, got it.
I. I don't know. I mean, I it sounds like an interesting idea to me, but. It's also just like the window person and you go through the motions and.
Yeah, I didn't.
I don't, I didn't know. Now I'm gonna, I apologize for, I still we need twenty minutes, so I wanted to fill in.
Um, there's one more thing in business, but I'm I think I'm going to not. Pursue it heavily tonight and pursue it after the meeting, um, which is, we have again to, we need to address our officer roles because. No, I took on secretary, he's leaving. We need to resolve this, we, Sarah is reluctantly, well, she's acting as secretary and tonight she's reluctantly done. Treasure, she really prefer not to do that, we need to sort this out and. You know, two, if we get new people in, they're not going to immediately assume of the position of that, you know, we gotta get. People like two months before we ask them to do more roles than that, so.
The one thing that should really get done is the treasure, because Melanie's name is still like on the credit card and on the accounts and.
Right, I mean, Sarah's treasure, but we kept her on the account just as the.
Right, but yeah, you're not gonna, like, you have to go to the bank.
Right, exactly, that that has a, that has the most overhead to be dealt with. So um, I'm gonna probably do some reach out after the meeting to suss out some options. Um, and see how we might be able to make this work in the. Perhaps with the short term plan and then um, as we get more people on, we can figure that out, but. Um, it's, you know, we we gotta, we gotta figure it out, so uh, in the next. I don't know how long, no, I said by December or so, um. You may have a month or two to to do this, but we need to do it sooner rather than later, so. Be prepared to be, I won't be on the spot tonight. It's, it's just, it's just. Now no one's gonna answer any of my calls. All right, um, motion, there was no correspondence except for the. All right. Motion to adjourn.